This October meeting, and they're going to write down council, will now come to order. Would you please stand and join me for a moment of silence? I'll ask councilperson Lillard to lead this interplay.
Pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey Danielle, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Lillard?
Here.
Mr. Vickers?
Here.
Ms. Lillard?
Here.
Mr. Sowers?
Here.
Mr. Pettit?
Here.
Mr. Sowers?
Here.
Mr. Webb?
Yes, here.
Okay, do we have any additions to or deletions from the agenda? Who will volunteer to do the consent agenda?
Sure. I move to approve the fine consent agenda. The minutes of the regular council meeting, September 12th, 2022. Minutes of the work session, September 27th, 2022. And accounts payable totaling $303,728.20.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Danielle?
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
All right, general citizen comments, we have two folks signed up. Did y'all want to speak now, or? Mr. Ramsey, would you like? Okay. Thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you. Contrary to what you might think I'm here to talk about on this particular issue. I just have a question, are you familiar with HSIP that's sponsored by VDOT? Does anybody know about that? The state has literally billions of dollars set aside in a trust, in a fund. It's called Highway Safety Improvement Program. And what you do is you make a petition to VDOT, and in this case, I think it's Edinburgh. Aren't you, I think you're understanding. You request, and they have on retainer, a consulting firm who will come to this town, do a traffic safety analysis, crosswalks, traffic signals, and all this kind of thing. And based on their recommendations, VDOT will fund those things 100%. There's no money coming out of your pocket. The key though is, you have to ask for it. And, and the other unique thing about it, there's some of this money was carried over through the COVID. And it's, it's not a five-year program. You're looking at these things being funded next year. They're looking at the spring and summer of turning the money loose. But you have until probably about the end of this month to get your request over to, to get on the list. To have the consultants who are on retainer, and it doesn't cost you all anything. You have nothing to lose. But it could involve some safety improvements if it requires new signals, pedestrian crosswalks, they will fund 100%.
All right, so thank you for being here, I guess we'll take that up at our work session in two weeks. Thank you again for coming this evening. All right, Mr. Austin, did you want to speak now or later?
Thank you all. I'm coming to you tonight on behalf of Bluewater Development Corporation to briefly discuss our current project, its status and problems that we're having that the town may be able to help us solve. So, Bluewater Development Corporation, if you haven't heard, you've heard some of that. But they have, we're currently in construction to expand the campground formerly known as Outlanders, which is on the outside of town by White House Bridge, to approximately 370 campsites, a combination of RV sites, high-end cabins, and camping sites. I've included the exhibit of what we introduced at the weekend, which ours might not change from that, unless at all. So that's, that's what the development is going to be, comes spring of this, of the week. The EDA director has compiled TOT projections for the rezoning that we went through. And I just want to kind of give you guys an idea, and obviously it's not directly tied to you guys, but I just want to know the impact that the community is going to receive from the amount of people here. So, at an average rate of $180 a night for the sites, at 353 sites is kind of what we projected at the time, it's now up to 370. We're looking at a total revenue of around 11 million at an 85% occupancy rate during April through October. So that's not counting the off-season, which more and more becomes, it's pretty much, as long as they can stay open, it's wide open. So, and that, you know, that's correlating to over half a million dollars of TOT funds. So I'm just giving you guys an idea of the impact. We're looking at 1,200 people a weekend coming during the peak season coming to our locality. And Bluewater has plenty of numbers that kind of go into how often they're staying there, they're going out to eat, you know, they're visiting, they're getting gas, they're buying groceries, you know, they're coming downtown to the shops. So that's something I'll provide a little more in-depth numbers on to you at a later time. But with our design of this, we've also been in process designing a 50,000 gallon a day wastewater treatment plant. And that treatment plant requires an EQ regulated discharge location, just like the town has for their wastewater plant. We're in the permitting process, and the last remaining hurdle, it relates to the need of obtaining nutrient credits. So just a brief overview, the General Assembly has instated legislation that any new or expanding discharge greater than 40,000 gallons a day must acquire wasteload allocations sufficient to offset any increase. So basically, if you're upgrading a plant or starting a new one, you've got to, you've got to show a net zero on what you're producing. And that is basically to accommodate all the growth in the Chesapeake Bay watershed. They've provided a foundation for establishing a market-based incentives to help achieve, to allow those programs to thrive and still meet their regulations on the bay. So the town, in this instance, by properly running your wastewater plant, very well, I might add, you produce a certain amount of nitrogen and phosphorus allocations and credits each, each year. And those are published by the EQ. The town is part of the Virginia Exchange, which is an avenue they created to help trade and purchase these credits, okay? So essentially, you pay to be a member, and so that if needed, you can trade and purchase credits to cover if you have a shortfall in a year, or if you have an excess, as the town does, you can sell those, the exchange can sell those. And as of right now, the exchange gets a pretty significant fee off those credits that you guys produce and others that are in that exchange. And then you guys, the creator of those credits, do get a percentage fee of that. The caveat to that is you can't be part of the exchange unless you have credits. And that's kind of where we're at right now, we're in a place where you can't purchase them unless you're a member, and you can't be a member unless you already have credits. So localities can trade and sell these credits privately. It's just not largely advertised for a number of reasons, one of which, localities aren't typically aware of what you can and can't do with those. And two, it's that you want to hold on to what you've got to make sure it covers your needs and regulations. So, so back out of that, RACI, we have designed the system to meet the EQ standards for the release of nitrogen and phosphorus. Eight pounds of phosphorus, one pound of nitrogen per year. So in addition to that, they make you buy credits to meet net zero. So we've done better than that, we're actually at five pounds and one pound. So what we need is a, is a vendor, an avenue to purchase these credits privately, so that we can get this permit. And it's been in the cycle of about four months where we've witnessed rat race, and the EQ is now coming to the front saying, you know, we have an issue here that we haven't quite resolved, that we're in this circle of you're just chasing your tail, you can't buy them unless you're in it, you can't be in it until you have credits. So, so we're going to be bringing to you more information in the coming days, so that we can have, you can be prepared at the work session to sit down with you guys and go over our proposal for Bluewater's request to lease credits from the town for the required five-year period under contract, and go over any additional information necessary to help make your decision. We have contract templates from other localities, and we want to ensure, you know, if I can get a chance to look at that, obviously, that everyone's comfortable from, from the town's perspective, and that there is a provision in there that if the town would have a shortfall a year, within that five years on, on the wastewater plant, that those credits are yours to take back, and Bluewater has to fend for themselves to figure out how to pay for that. The, the intent with this is to basically get our permit and immediately apply for the exchange to be a member of that, once we have the credits. And as soon as we are members, we want, Bluewater wants to be able to obviously not have to rely on anyone else in the future. So we hope that the town will see this as an opportunity to receive some income. We're looking at for hours, it's about $6,000 a year right now, just off, off the rates from the exchange. For those nutrient allowances that you're not using, while at the same time hopefully helping bolster this, this incorporation, this expansion of the tourism, that will eventually come here as well. So, I just wanted to kind of give you guys a heads up, I wasn't able to get on the agenda fully with everything you guys need to talk on this more of a work session, I think, anyway. But Steve and I, Ryan, and I think we've already started getting Vikings involved. But we do have, you know, we do have templates from other localities that this is done, it's just not common, only because it's, like I say, it's not really advertised. And personally, it's part of the exchanges to their advantage, but you do not want to sell to make a market difference. So if you have any questions, I can answer them otherwise, I just want to kind of do all that.
Thank you Tyler, I guess we'll look forward to, I mean, it's a lot for me to absorb, but it's a completely new subject for me, so probably everybody, but we'll look forward to working with you in the future, as always.
Thank you.
All right. No more citizen comments? Mr. Burke, I believe you're Jackie Elliott this evening, aren't you?
Yes sir, Ms. Elliott apologizes if she's not able to attend tonight's meeting. She did want to convey to council your attention about the LDI's fundraiser, which is a cookbook. They are hoping to get folks to donate or to submit their recipes, as well as a short where it came from, whether it was, you know, grandparents, parents, something of that nature. And they need those submissions dropped off by October 21st. And they're hoping to have these cookbooks available for the holidays at a cost of $20. Downtown Halloween preparations are continuing. So far, LDI has over 20 non-main street organizations that will be participating, in addition to those main street businesses. If you are aware of any organization that would like to participate, she still has some space available. So just have someone contact Jackie, either by phone or email, to coordinate that. And then finally, LDI and the town are continuing to work with a VCU student who is developing her capstone or graduate project that's analyzing opportunities for downtown Lorreay. That's all I had for Mr. Ramsey.
Thank you Steve. I guess we'll move on to public hearings. We have a special use permit 22-08-303 Lorreay Avenue. I'll open that public hearing now. Anyone here want to speak? Steve, we have any letters or emails, phone calls, anything?
No sir, no sir.
A council discussion?
I don't have any questions, I'd go by, it's a nice looking little house.
So this is not a local person, they don't actually live here, right?
Correct.
Okay, because the applications indicated like, well, I'm not at home in Lorreay, but...
Yeah, they're, they're out of Maryland. And talking with them, they, they do intend to use it as a vacation home, but when it's not used by them, they won't be able to market it.
I've heard from a few people here, I, I'm for this, I don't have a problem with it, but I've heard some people say things like, hey, are we going to turn our whole town into Airbnbs? Different, different comments along those lines. I think it's good, we, we needed, this is a need that we have in our town. But we may be fast approaching, maybe not fast approaching, a time where we need to come up with some policy around this, to maybe curb it at some point. Just food for thought, my, my two cents.
Well, in this case, that, that little house sure looks a whole lot better now.
Oh yeah, did a nice job with it.
And that's the thing, and most obvious, it's been that, that's been the case, right?
I think it's been vacant for several years too.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I do think that the, the conditions we have are good, but now adding the, that these are not transferable. It is just with that person, so we're not, I know we just kind of started that, but we're not handing a person that, you know, chip and sand it's yours, you can pass it on to anyone else. At least if it is sold. But I, I agree, I mean, we've approved everyone, I don't generally have a big problem with them, but at some point, you know, we got, I have places for people to live here too. So unless presented with evidence, people live, live around there, I'm, I'm inclined to approve.
I don't think, I mean, if we have, I haven't heard about it, but I don't think we've had a lot of issues with the Airbnbs once they're established in the neighborhoods. I mean, I, I agree, we, we are approving a lot of them, but I think what a lot of the people that are apprehensive about it don't understand is that when we can collect these TOT monies from Airbnbs like this, that helps stabilize their real estate rates and makes, does add to our coffers without raising the real estate. So, yeah, and I think Ligon's right, the, the condition that we've imposed about them not being transferable, I think that might dwindle some of the interest, but I think, I think by and large, they're, they're good for the town. And if we, if we, you know, if we were having a lot of problems with them, a lot of complaints on them, that would be, but, and we've approved a lot of them, and they're, they've been operating for a while now, and we haven't gotten any, so.
Yeah, I think the main drawback goes along with what you said, that the concern I've heard is, is some people that are local residents that struggle finding affordable rental property. And what's happened is, as more and more of these turn into Airbnb, where what few rentals, it seems like our rental market for those, the people that live here that, that, that are looking for month to month, the, the prices are increasing regularly on those because of the availability. So I think most apartments or anything here in town, starting at around eight, 900 and up, even for a one or two bedroom apartment. And so that's, that's the one, that's the thing I see with it, that I believe you're speaking of too, Joey, is that it's just, it seems like we're getting less and less opportunity for people that live here to find rental property.
Yeah, that is a concern.
Yeah, that's what's shrinking.
And I think that, I mean, of course you can't stifle business to, to try to keep costs down in some areas. And I think on the other side of the town's doing, I mean, we, we've done a lot to try to create some affordable housing too. So, yeah, that's, that, that's the, one of the downsides of it, for sure.
But in aggregate, I think it's positive, but it's just...
Yeah, yeah.
Something we need to keep in mind.
It was a topic of concern at the VML, that another thing, we're ruining neighborhoods, the traditional neighborhood, we're losing them, as they're becoming filled up with Airbnbs. And as Jason said, that it's squeezing the traditional rental market. But on the other hand, you know, they're fixing up these older properties.
Yeah, and you'd never, a regular land.
We get tax revenue from them, and we get the TOT.
Absolutely.
Lodging, I guess we call it lodging tags, and of course, they're going downtown and spending money, hopefully, so it's, it's a tough choice, it is.
A normal, a normal landlord would not put the kind of money in these older homes and fix them up the way someone that's used them for an Airbnb is.
But as we get more tourists, there has to be employees that are working in the shops.
Well, that's another, that's another.
And as more and more people come, there's more and more services needed, and someone has to fill that role.
We could solve that one, I think we would, we wouldn't be sitting here if we could solve that one.
But that will, that will be something to see in town.
It's not just, it's not just happening here, everybody's talking about it, it's happening everywhere.
There was a couple I spoke with, probably two or three months ago, and they lived from North Carolina area. And we were talking about some of the changes here in this town, they were visiting. And they said in their town, they had stopped Airbnbs altogether. And they had put the brakes on, because of some of the struggles that we're speaking of. And theirs was at a different level than we are, of course, here, but it was the same concerns.
All right, any more discussion on that? Anybody want to make a motion?
Mayor, I'll move that the town council approves the special use permit to operate a lighting house at 303 Lorreay Avenue, tax map number 42A11-18-72-6, and a high-density Boomfield Residential, ARPA district from Harbor Holding Company, with the conditions identified as presented.
I second it.
Any more discussion?
Yes, actually. Since it is going into a holding company, the tran, that, a transfer of ownership of the holding company does not, would likewise remove that use, right? Is that the case, or is that not the case?
Let me look at how that condition is phrased.
Yeah. If not, we might need to tweak that language moving forward. 51% or something like that, change it on the show.
We could just perhaps say, special use permit shall not transfer, transfer upon sale of property or membership interest in, in company.
Yeah, yeah, that would be good.
And if you guys want to make that change this evening, if you're comfortable, I think that's fine. Or if you want to table it to next month, we could potentially dial in the language even more, but I, I'm comfortable with the change.
I bet we can, yeah, whatever you said, or Steve, you have something there for us?
Or membership composition to the company. On item six, special use permit shall not transfer upon sale of the property or membership composition.
Membership interest is the technical term in Virginia law.
Okay.
Perfect. Any more discussion? Danielle?
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Okay, Mr. Burke, bond issuance from a Green Water Meter Finance.
Yes sir. Council's requested to conduct a public hearing to receive input from residents regarding council's approval and authorization for a tax exempt construction loan from Blue Ridge Bank to fund the acquisition and installation of remote water meters for the town. The $750,000 general obligation bond, a bank, bank qualified bond, will be payable over 11 years, with the first year being interest only while the town performs the construction activities of acquisition and installation of the water meters, with an interest rate for that first year of 5.89%, and thereafter, for the remainder, remaining 10 years, a fixed rate of 4.65%. And then council's also requested to consider authorization of $350,000 of the town's ARPA allocation to fund this project.
Any discussion?
Public hearing.
I'm sorry, okay, all right, my fault, my fault. All right, I'll open a public hearing, anybody here want to speak? Randy, you want to say anything? Steve, you got emails, calls, letters, nothing?
No sir.
Okay, all right. Hearing nothing, I'll close the public hearing. Now council, any discussion?
I would like to see us up the amount down, I think we said last time, if it would be possible to do, you know, let's say 550, 550? If we could just plan on taking 200,000, just feel more comfortable, more we could put down. I would, I'd be supportive of doing it that way, if, if everyone's in agreement. I think there's some areas, looking at the, what we've spent, I think there's still some funds there that we could, we could do the 550 down, and I just think that would, I'd be a little more comfortable if we were putting more funds down. And, and talking to the more folks around town, I really do think that, especially what Stanley said, is that a lot of the issues with water bills, I think, are metering. Maybe sometimes we estimate when people think they didn't use as, as much. And I really do believe, and having a few conversations in the last few weeks, that this will solve a lot of issues that some people seem to have frustrations with their water bills. Is knowing exactly what is going through that meter, as opposed to, you know, a thing that spins and sometimes, you know, that's 30, 40 years old. So I think this will, will have a lot of benefits, and particularly, as we heard, I think Stanley gave it, our friends from Stanley gave it a, very much a, a, a big endorsement, so I think that means a lot, that they're very happy with it, and I think we will too. As long as we can put a little more money down, that's what I would, I would encourage.
I think it's probably a good idea, putting, putting some more money down. Well, I mean, we're taking advantage of the ARPA funding, and this will let us leverage it, leverage it and reduce the debt service on it, so.
Would 550 down be something the council would entertain?
What's that do to some of the other? What are you thinking about taking it from?
Well, we had several categories there that I, I wasn't aware, you know, we had some line improvements, we had a fire, fire department funding of 100K. I don't know, I didn't know we had decided on that. There was four, five, $600,000, I think that we could, that we could evaluate, that we just took out 200,000, and then whatsoever left over, look at those categories, fire and everyone else, I'm not saying they won't get that, but I think there's some wiggle room looking at it, that we could do the 550.
Yeah, I think that's probably a good idea.
Did everyone receive a memo that kind of shows some of the benefits, including financial? So I stopped in and talked to folks in the office this past week, and it was very helpful. They, they were able to identify, Danielle in particular, what, what was it, 80, 80 how much thousand in labor offset, 81?
I think about 84,000.
84,000. And on top of that, they were, we were just kind of spitballing as far as mileage running around, it's probably another 10,000 in vehicle expense. So you're at, you're 94,000, the debt service on it's going to come in less than that per year, so I'm doing an about face on it. I think it sounds like, with the benefit, which I always liked the benefit of it, but I didn't like the expense. So now it looks like, granted that only, we would only realize that in the event that we, through a reduction in employee count. But certainly there's other, either other tasks they can do, or just by virtue of attrition, maybe we see that we don't need someone, so. Financially, it seems fairly sound, and it does have some benefits to the townspeople. If a handful of people a year don't get hit with a $1,000 water bill, they'll be feeling pretty good about it, so.
I do apologize that I didn't get this out to everyone, I did send it out to Councilman Sowers because he had a specific conversation about it.
Sure.
I'm happy to forward it to you guys if you'd like.
Yeah, sure.
And at our last meeting, when Councilman Webb mentioned that, yes, it's a lot of money right now, we were sort of debating on whether this is something we do or not, but... And at our last meeting, when, um, Councilman Webb mentioned that, yes, it's a lot of money right now, but people were sort of debating on whether this is something we do or not, but he made the comment about this is inevitable, it's going to be, we either do it now, or these are the type of systems that five to seven years from now, we'd have to be, you know, we may have to be doing the same thing, and these funds and the opportunity we have now, uh, won't be the same as, as what's in place, but it does make sense.
Well, didn't Stanley indicate they had seen an increase in their revenue on a monthly basis, and I think we can probably expect even larger amounts than they had, so that's going to be, it's going to be pretty significant.
I did actually verify that with Leon, I, I had a follow-up conversation.
Okay, thank you, Daniel.
With him, um, and just to thank them, you know, for coming in, and, um, he did verify, they had about a ten to twelve percent increase in revenue just based on accuracy, um, and obviously, you know, they're much smaller, um, so about ten to twelve percent.
What'd that equate to for us, Daniel, can you?
Oh, wow.
Well, I'm sorry. Just a guess.
Easily.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it could easily avoid a future rate increase in the near future, I mean, just in, in improved accuracy, I know Brian and I crunch those numbers, you know, every year as we approach budget cap, and, um, you know, we're dealing in the one percent rate increases, so that's huge.
We would need to do a rate reduction, would we not? Or would we just start making a quarter million dollars on water, on water, and so we would reduce our rate, wouldn't we, after the first year?
Well, that, that would be up to council, um, unfortunately, if you look at the water and wastewater wish list for ARPA funds, uh, tho, those projects greatly exceeded the, the two million dollars.
Sure.
Uh, so, uh, and, 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 it, it, again, it's up to council, but at least on the water side, we are still having to look at the cover for the, um, uh, storage facility out at, uh, uh, over by the lake.
That's right.
And then we've got a few other things, we've, 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 council has done an outstanding job of taking care of some of the major things, but we, we still have a lot of other items that.
Needs, or, so, well, that's what we'll have to get into at a later time, but yeah.
When do you think that, when would the installation, it, were to prove this, wha, when would it begin, I mean, would it, would it literally start in the next few months, or?
Well, no, uh, with council's approval tonight, that gives us the, the funding to go ahead and advertise for, uh, a firm to, to do this, uh, that would be about three months, uh, to, to get that out, get it reviewed, get it back to council. So I would suspect that, uh, installation would probably start within five months. And that was part of the reason that, uh, the, the loan was structured in such a way to give us that, that year, because we haven't selected a, um, a firm to do this yet.
Well, the price won't change, though.
Uh, then, that's the other, that's the other reason to do this, is that, uh, in between the first time that we talked to the bank and, and, and this most recent quote, the interest rates went up, and in talking with a few of the, the companies that have provided us quotes, they've all seen an increase in, in costs, so we're hoping that the, the million dollars is still a fair, uh, fair quote when we get it out to bid, so, the sooner we get it out, the more, the quicker that we have a locked-in rate.
Any more discussion?
I, I, I'll say, I mean, I think it's a, I think it's a good project, and I think it's, uh, money well spent.
Well, I would make a, sorry, sorry.
No, no, I, I was just going to say, I knew, I knew once you guys slept on it a little while, you'd see that.
Yeah, I see the motion here, I'm going to make a little change, um, I move the town council approve the resolution approving the issuance of a five hundred and fifty thousand general obligation bank-qualified, you, you said seven fifty?
That's the terms of the loan, if, if y'all could keep that, that way, um, because if we change it now, we'd have to go back and, and, um.
But if we put more money down, then that's not a problem?
Correct, because the, 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 the obligation, uh, the general obligation bond is up to seven fifty.
Okay.
And it also allows for a little bit of wiggle room if the quotes come in slightly higher than, than you expect.
Okay. So should I put the author, authorize the use up to five hundred and fifty?
Yes.
Okay, that'd be, okay, so I'll amend my motion, I move the town council approve the resolution approving the issuance of the seven hundred and fifty thousand general obligation bank-qualified bond as presented. I further move that town council approve authorizing the use up to three hundred and fifty, five hundred and fifty thousand of A R P A funding for the remote Reed Water Meter Project.
I'll second that.
All right, any more discussion?
I do have a couple of the points that a citizen, I told him I would, I would mention, he said, as we're evaluating providers, where is the data being stored? You know, is it just simply how many ti, how much water usage, or is it going to actually have, go back to individual owners? Is it, is it stored overseas anywhere, uh, where's, where are the meters in the system made, is it made, it made in the United States, or is it made in China or somewhere else? And, uh, those were, those were his biggest ones, I just, I told him, told him I would convey those messages to our, our staff.
And, until we received bids, I couldn't confirm.
Of course, of course.
Location and manufacturer, the data, or, it, it's read through the meters, and it, it resides in this building.
Because it's going to be manually imported, is what you said, right? Anything else?
Yeah, so there's an import process to get it into our accounting, our, our billing software.
Okay.
So that would all be maintained in-house with, with our own servers, um, but like you, you had mentioned as well about the customer's account, it would detail it per customer. Um, so I believe Stanley had mentioned that they could go back, um, a period of twelve months for that customer, that would be stored in-house.
And I will defer to Jordan, but I do believe that individual utility user account data is not a foriable request.
Hmm.
So, uh, we can only give out general usage of, of areas, not of any specific, uh, individual account.
Okay. So.
I think that's correct.
Any more discussion?
I, I remember hearing that a customer could ask for a, more of a printout of their water usage over, I don't know what time period it would be.
I believe they said they can do it one year, um, I would have to confirm that, though.
I'm wondering how many people's going to want to see what that is, just so they know, I mean, that could, that could be a lot of, lot of paperwork. I mean, I'm going to ask for it, for sure.
It typically.
Totaled up your monthly bills, right there, you'd have it.
It, it typically is helpful if someone is experiencing a high usage, um, that way they'd be able to, to know.
To know more idea what happened, yeah.
Correct. Especially if, if we go out to the meter and it's not indicating a leak, uh, unfortunately, I think, believe we've had at least one recent incident of someone hooking up a hose at night from a neighboring property. Then.
Sorry about that. Got to fill my pool up.
Honestly, that was the problem.
Oh, really?
All right, any more discussion?
So, got a motion, got a second.
Daniel?
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Shiro?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Steve, you have a copy of Mr. Comer's proclamation, I think I left mine in my office, I'll have to.
Did you want to read it, sir?
Uh, do you have a copy?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, all right. Okay, Mr. George Comer, whereas George Comer's family has lived and worked property around Luray for several generations, and, whereas, Mr. Comer has recently donated several items to the town to share with our citizens and visitors, and, whereas, Mr. Comer has donated photographs and historic documents and diary entries, and, whereas, Mr. Comer has donated a Civil War-era artillery sword, a Civil War-era spur, an antique mercury glass vase, a D H Henkel Stoneman stoneware jar, and a George Pollack Skyland bench, and, where, whereas, the town is grateful for this generosity and intends to share and display these items. Now, be, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and members of town council, the town of Luray hereby express our sincere appreciation and gratitude to Mr. George Comer and his family for their donation of items and photographs to the town of Luray. Okay, I think we need a motion adopt this, don't we?
I move. No, go ahead, Joe.
I move the town council approve the proclamation of appreciation for George Comer on his generous donation of photos and artifacts to the town.
Second.
Discussion? Daniel?
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Shiro?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Burke, um, twenty-two dash oh-six, Reservoir subdivision.
Yes, sir, council's requested to consider the preliminary and final plat application received from Tom Schumaker and Jim Vaughn for the subdivision of parcel forty-two A twelve dash A dash one oh one into twelve single-family dwelling lots with a residue parcel along Reservoir Avenue and Fairview Road. Uh, the applicants previously submitted a sketch plat that proposed a subdivision of thirty-six single-family dwellings on this parcel, uh, they are proposing, the, the, the first twelve lots are those that are adjacent to Reservoir and Fairview. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval of the preliminary and final plat applications at their September fourteenth meeting.
All right, council, any discussion?
When I drove by there, there's a tree, or a set of trees, about in the middle of that space. Is there a cemetery, is anybody buried there?
To my knowledge, there's none shown on, on the plats.
Okay.
Yeah, there's no well.
It's a well?
Windmill used to be there.
That had to be something.
Thought that was on the other side of the road, is it went on the other side of the road, too?
No, there, that windmill is gone, but what.
Oh, okay. But no wonder it went down?
Yeah, what Ron's speaking about is, it was a watering trough for horses, is what that was, back in the day, yeah.
All right, any more discussion? All right, need a motion?
I move that the town council approve the subdivision application for Tom Schumaker and Jim Vaughn for the subdivision of parcel forty-two A twelve dash A dash one oh one into twelve single-family dwelling lots with residue parcel along Reservoir Avenue and Fairview Road as presented.
Seconded.
Any more discussion?
Uh, one question. So in tonight's approval on this, this is the twelve lots that front Eden Road, correct?
Uh, Reservoir.
Reservoir, excuse me, yeah, so, um, a fifty-foot temporary cul-de-sac between eleven and twelve, which for future development, there'd be road discussion.
Yes, sir.
As far as any other lots in behind that.
Yes, sir, the, 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 that cul-de-sac was required because that other lot does not have direct frontage on Fairview and Reservoir, so it, the frontage will be on that future road.
Okay. Okay, that's all.
Any more discussion? Daniel?
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Shiro?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Burke?
Uh, council's requested to consider the selection of RACI Engineering to perform construction engineering services for the Memorial Drive Quarter Improvements Project through the Northern Shenandoah Valley Regional Commission's On-Call Consulting Program. Construction engineering services for the Memorial Drive Project are estimated at seventy-eight thousand six hundred dollars, and in addition, the town will incur a regional commission program fee of twenty-five hundred dollars for the project.
Council, any thoughts, questions?
What are the funding on this project, could you give us a little overview on, this is, um?
This is a revenue sharing project, uh, the town's portion will be coming out of our fund reserve, and then the county, uh, the, the VDOT pays the other half. And we estimated, uh, that, I believe it's, our share is about a little over a million, something like that. I can't recall if it counted, I apologize, but it, it, it's in that million-dollar, uh, range.
We said fu, fu, fu.
Why is this contract coming up now, after they did it, after they started it?
I'm sorry?
Why is this contract coming up after it's already begun?
We had planned, uh, well, originally, when, when we planned to use RACI to do this, we found out that the regional commission's contract, original contract had concluded, uh, that there is a cutoff time, so they were in the process of updating it. So in order for us to save time and to utilize this contract, we had to wait for them to complete it, and then reauthorize the, the use of, of firms from that contract, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Obviously, uh, fund reserve, I mean, is this our VDOT allocation, or, or are you saying for the?
Out of, out of general fund reserve.
Well, wasn't some of this money back from Valley Al, too?
That was just for the light.
Yeah, I believe that was for the first.
It wasn't for any of the other?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay.
Anybody else? Need a motion?
I'll move to approve the award of the Memorial Drive Quarter Improvements Construction Engineering Services contract to RACI Engineering in the amount not to exceed seventy-eight thousand six hundred dollars plus two thousand five hundred dollars for the Northern Shenandoah Valley Regional, uh, Commission program fee. I'll second that.
Any more discussion? Daniel?
Mr. Shiro?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Burke?
Yes, sir, uh, council's requested to consider a second, uh, selection of RACI Engineering to perform, uh, construction engineering services for the Luray Landing Sanitary Sewer Pump Station Number One, uh, through the regional commission's On-Call Consulting Program, construction engineering services are two hundred eighty-five thousand nine hundred twenty dollars for the Luray Landing Project, and in addition, the town will incur a regional commission program fee of twenty-five hundred dollars for the project.
Do we have a bid on that, that lift station?
We did, we do, that was the one that also came in at about a million one, a million two, um, and that's the, the project that council has authorized a portion of ARPA funds to go towards, supplemented by the, uh, connection fees from all of those, uh, new townhomes, in addition to the seventeen hundred dollar, um, fee that each of those dwellings is also paying to go towards these improvements.
So this is just the, the engineering cost for the construction?
For the construction inspection and over.
Everything else, right, right, all the plans, construction inspections, okay.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else? A motion?
Okay.
Nobody.
Time to get motions out of y'all tonight.
Go for it, Jerry.
I move to, go ahead.
See, nobody wants to do that.
Everybody wants to.
I move toward the Luray Landing Sewer Pump Station Number One Project Construction Engineering Services contract to RACI Engineering in the amount not to exceed two hundred eighty-five thousand one hundred twenty dollars plus two thousand five hundred dollars for the N S V R C program fee.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, any more discussion? Daniel?
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Shiro?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Burke, Fairview Subdivision Boundary Line Adjustment.
Yes, sir, council's requested to consider the request from Ramsey Inc. to Boundary Line Adjust five point six one acres of property into the town limits to allow duplexes to be constructed. Uh, Mr. Ramsey has provided a deed, and the two thousand twenty-two real estate tax statement that appears to confirm his ownership of the property, uh, of Ellis Drive, and Page County has confirmed his ownership. Uh, he has, uh, also signed an amendment to the pre-annexation agreement that would also clarify the use of Ellis Drive, and to extend the agreement date to January first to twenty twenty-three. Mr. Ramsey has also indicated that he will be paving Arthur Lane, uh, as part of the improvements.
So, tell me again what's going on with Ellis Drive, I'm, I'm, I, so it is privately owned by, Chris?
The, the portion directly adjacent to his.
Okay, and it is an unimproved county roadway? Is that what?
Do you want to read them?
Yeah, please.
Anytime, Jerry.
There is some ambiguity about ownership, uh, I can get really down in the weeds if, if you want me to, but I think the county and the developer both have responded that they believe the developer is the owner. So what you said i- is what the county and the developer say, which is the developer owns it, um, the, it not being a county street and being private. and being private, the county, I think, really has, has said, "Look, we're not, you know, we're not really regulating this," which is why we went back to the developer to get an affirmative agreement that they're gonna keep it open and not close it, because absent that agreement, there's really no requirement that they do that. Um, so, so with that in hand, and if you have more questions about the ownership, I can respond to those, but...
So, so it's changed from last meeting where everyone, wherever you said it was a county, so no, no portion of it is a county unimproved roadway?
My opinion is still that it's a county unimproved roadway, to be, to be fair. The county's opinion is different than mine. Uh, the county says it's owned by the developer. I don't really know how, what, or why they think that. Um, that's not my opinion, but, um...
But the people who use Ellis Drive, I mean, I understand, you know, you've used something for years and, you know, someone else more houses, I mean, no one wants more traffic, but they can't, they don't collectively own it.
Correct.
So, they can't come up and say, "Well, you can't drive on it," because they don't own it. Um, I think from a planning perspective, it makes great sense that it connects, even though it's a new, something new, and that folks probably won't like it, but it would seem a lot more, I don't know, well, first of all, I think we can't have a cul-de-sac that long. I don't, you know, that's the one thing, but I think it makes perfect sense that it connect. But, Chris, those lots, I mean, they've been on record for a long time.
Ninety-five.
Okay, well, that's, yeah, it counts, okay. So, those, those lots have been there in the county. Um, but I guess my question is if you have agreement, you wanna rezone this to R three, it looks like you wanna do duplexes, which, which, you know, it's kind of a different conversation. If for some reason you decided you did not want to do that, um, I mean, would you, you're still gonna improve that, right? I think my, my question is, is Arthur Drive will be improved, paved at some point by you or the, or the, uh, or the Neighborhood Association? What's, what's, is the, kind of the, give me some details on that, if, if you did not move forward with rezoning? Yeah, sure, sure, I think, yeah. I think right here would be better, that way...
There's been confusion on that point. I sent a text or email to Steve clarifying that completely. Uh, we will be paving Arthur Lane, twenty-two feet wide, which is the standard state spec, uh, cross-section. It will be, uh, what we call a low-impact development, so it will have, uh, grass strip drainage, which helps for filtration and low, uh, low-flow runoff and that type of thing, so it's a positive in effect, in its impact on the surrounding area. In addition to paving Arthur Lane from Fairview Road to Ellis Street, we will be doing additional paving on Ellis Street. From the intersection of Arthur Lane and Ellis Street, south and north, approximately a hundred and fifty feet, which is the width of the lots that we are improving and building on. Purpose being, not shy, not bashful. If you are out there, that's a dusty road. And the purpose of paving it, now, I'm not paving it twenty-two feet wide. Right now, it's probably fourteen feet or something like that. I'm looking to put a twelve-foot pavement section on that, three inches, the standard type of, uh, installation, and then gravel shoulders on that, so people can pass if they need to, but seldom do you ever have two vehicles on that section at a time. Point being is, a portion of it will be paved for dust control, and at the same time, I will be going through a notification process of the people, notifying the people who have an interest in Ellis Street, that, uh, for cost, if they would like to participate, and right now, it's about forty dollars a linear foot, if anyone would like to participate in that, we can pave more of Ellis Street if they would like that done, and I'm happy, because it'd be appropriate to do it at that time. So, so there will be paving improvements made on both streets. And the, uh, the way the title to Ellis Street came about was, I think it goes clear back to Arch Ellis, and when he did the development, he owned all that. And down through the processes, that land was reserved as access to the surrounding properties, and by virtue of never being dedicated to any other, anyone else, it hadn't been conveyed and not become a vacant dormant untaxed property. And I had, when I bought it in two thousand and seven, I had that very discussion. I said, "I don't want these streets," and Arch Ellis told me, says, "You know, you might need those one day." Well, we found out today how important that was. And at the same time, I have never touched it, I've never obstructed, I have no tensions of it. I, I wanna live at peace, and we only wanna make things better. And it's my opinion, doesn't take rocket scientists to figure out, that if we pave a twenty-two-foot section from Fairview Drive back to Ellis Street, there's thirteen mailboxes out there. Now, I mean, people live back in this wood, but there's thirteen mailboxes out there. And do you really think that if they're going to Fairview Road, Reservoir Road, that they're gonna drive on down Ellis Drive and a dustball, or are they gonna turn right and come out Arthur Lane to Fairview Road to go down? So, as a result, I think that it's a, it's a inherent benefit to the, to the neighborhood. And at this point in time, that while I'll be pursuing, as I did previously when you asked me to pursue this, the option of doing duplexes, but do, and that's a market-driven decision. At this time, we are selling lots, and I am currently applying for, and building single-family homes on these fourteen lots. So, uh, we will, we will maintain that option, but our plans and directives at this point of single-family housing, as you see, being built out there today.
Okay.
Same type of standard, same, uh, quality, same, same prices and that type of thing. So, that's our commitment, maybe, tonight. Well, thank you, Mr. Ramsey, thank you. And we thank you for being at Lorre and investing in our community. We, we certainly appreciate. We haven't had a chance to say that to you, but thank you very much for just being here.
I've been here quite a while.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I haven't had a chance to tell, I haven't had a chance to tell you that, but thank you.
That was my only real concern, is that that is, if it doesn't go to duplexes, which it sounds like it probably won't, is that this will be paved, and it sounds like you've got a, a really good plan, so is that what we've got here? George?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yeah, okay, all right, good.
So, to, to clarify all that, that those on Arthur Drive would be able to access Ellis Drive if they chose to, to come on out to Antioch and, or go to Fairview, and those that are currently on Ellis Drive can continue to use Ellis Drive the same as they always have, as far as coming and going from Antioch back. And, uh, okay, and that was the concern the other month with-
And additionally, those using Ellis Drive currently will be able to use Arthur Lane.
Right, right, I see what you're saying, right.
Yeah, there's a, an additional option.
Right.
Which is good for safety and security factors.
Right, and tha- and that was my concern the other month, was that, really concerned about if that connection did not happen, that being, Arthur Drive being a dead end where the only way to turn around is into people's driveways or whatever, or, or a large vehicle get back there and have trouble. So, okay, very good.
Council, any more discussion?
So, after, if we pass this, then it still goes back to the county? They have to then agree?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make that motion. I move that the town council approve the Fairview Subdivision Boundary Line Adjustment Agreement for the Fairview Subdivision as presented and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement. I further note to, uh, I further move to authorize the town manager, town treasurer, and town attorney to execute any documents necessary to obtain approval of the agreement from the Circuit Court of Page County.
Any more discussion? Daniel?
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Mr. Ramsey, yeah, thank you for being here, and just thank you for being here. Okay, Mr. Burke?
Yes, sir. Council's requested to consider authorization of ARPA funding in the amount of five thousand dollars for the acquisition of a display case for the town hall lobby to display photographs and items of historical significance to build to Lorre.
They really cost that much?
Unfortunately, yes, sir.
There's a shop guy over here.
That's what I'm wondering. I guess, I guess it's got to-
For that cost, you get a, a much thicker glass that will hopefully prevent people from trying to take anything, and it, it, it is a, a more secure than simply just a, a typical curio case.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the Henkel, uh, whatever it is, uh, pottery is a very valuable piece. We're still not, haven't figured out the exact value, but it's a Stoneman pottery.
That and the, um, a member of the caverns has requested that if the council ever considers to sell the sword, he wants first dibs.
So, is it for these, is it for these several items, or is the plan to add more, you said previously, right?
Yes, sir. Uh, we've got a number of, of photographs that we'd love to be able to display there. Uh, the chief has, uh, a firearm that, once it's been completely dedicated to the town and, uh, decommissioned, we would love to put that on display as well. So, there's, there's the opportunity, and hopefully, we'll continue to have folks, once they recognize that we are committed to displaying items of significance to Lorre, we'll consider the town as, for future donations.
Okay.
Any more discussion? Uh, need a motion?
I move the town council authorize the use of five thousand dollars of the town's ARPA allocation to fund the acquisition of a display case for the town hall lobby.
Second.
Any discussion? Daniel?
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit? Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Burke, police vehicles.
Yes, sir. Council's requested to consider authorization of ARPA funding in the amount of twelve thousand, eight hundred, eighteen dollars for the upfitting of four police cruisers previously authorized through ARPA funding. The upfitting includes antenna radar systems and passenger cages. Uh, the total costs for the, the vehicle acquisition was insufficient to cover these costs.
Well, we got cars, we gotta have the rest of it, so.
Can I interrupt there for a second? Sure, sure. He just texted me, too, new cruisers, might add thirty-two hundred to that. Just throwing it out there. New cruisers, the rear lights are supposed to come in, be built into the car, and they have not. Uh, so he's in the negotiation, hopefully, they pull through, he ordered them built into the car, and they, the first car we got, the nine, the rear blue light, and they're eight hundred dollars a piece. It's new stuff, I think, we're at twenty-two thousand, or something.
Uh, it's twelve eight, uh, eight, eight, eighty-seven hundred for the, uh, radar and, and four thousand for the cages. So, if we add an additional thirty-two hundred, council would be requested to authorize the use of sixteen thousand, eighteen dollars.
So, we have a car change?
We got one, yes, right, the first.
That we ordered a year ago.
We got four.
So, four are coming?
Yes. Should we do, uh, up to a little more yet, or is that gonna be sufficient? Up to twenty thousand? If it's gonna be nickel and diming and then he...
Are we gonna have to upfit the others as well? I mean, we're gonna-
Just four. He ordered them with, so this package plane came out with the four. We normally have the white separate.
Right.
And the weirdly hard start with, but Ford had option this year to put in the fin automatically. He ordered that in the fin originally for the price, but they did not, yeah. So, he's negotiating, he hasn't got an answer back yet, whether that's, we checked the first car last week, we did the last, or whatever.
So, the thirty-two would cover all four vehicles?
And that may be something that gets corrected.
Yes, it may be corrected.
Right, okay.
He ordered it. Thought I wanted to throw it out there, just in case.
I just saved seventeen thousand, call it a day, I mean.
Right, we need a motion?
I move the town council authorize the use of up to seventeen thousand for the upfitting of four police cruisers purchased with ARPA funding.
Any more discussion? Daniel?
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
I will note that we ordered the light bars and all that stuff ahead of time. Uh, I was talking to the mayor of Strasburg, they have four cars they can't use because they can't get the stuff to them. Well, I should mention.
You didn't give them to him, did you?
Well, kinda. Okay. All right, Mr. Burke, WW wastewater treatment plant pump.
Yes, sir. Council's requested to consider authorization of ARPA funding in the amount of thirty-six thousand, two hundred, forty dollars and fifty cents for the acquisition of a spare influent pump for the wastewater treatment plant and a spare lift station pump. The spare pumps would be available should the existing pumps, uh, expire with all these pumps exceeding fifteen years of age.
And what's the lead time on those right now?
I believe the...
Because that was part of his rationale for wanting them, right?
Yes, there are several months, I believe.
And this is something that hasn't been on our, our radar list as far as?
No, sir, no, sir. Um...
Is that the spare influent pump that's?
Oh, okay.
What is it?
So, it's, it was on our wish list at thirty thousand, so.
Yeah, I thought it was.
Is it over on the left?
It's on the-
On the right?
Yeah, the gray items, yeah.
Okay. Well, I have moved that the town council authorize to use thirty-six thousand, two hundred, forty dollars and fifty cents for the acquisition of a spare influent pump for the wastewater treatment plant and spare lift station pump.
Any more discussion? Daniel, busy night.
Yes. Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Mr. Burke, our security cameras.
Yes, sir. Council's requested to authorize, uh, ARPA funding in the amount of thirty-four thousand dollars for the security cameras at Dean Park and Lake Arrowhead. Uh, the current, current security systems are older and require updating. Security cameras will allow investigation of incidents at the park and could allow remote monitoring by police and park staff. And I believe this was included in the original listing.
It is.
Has, uh, has our chief checked out their system to see if it's gonna be good for facial identification?
Oh, we can adapt the software, too, yes. If they get certain cameras will be-
Well, I'm just wondering, you know, because some of the cameras, you see them, and it's looking for the suspect, and it's a tan blur, so.
I think you have that with any camera, usually, is the way it works, but typically you get a good camera, but, but our cameras that we're installing now, that we installed out of Allen, we have face recognition and LPR, which we have the LPR, um, so, we'll leave to that, yes.
Have, have we had any big, sense of vandalism? I know we had, for a few years, there we had a lot. I mean, maybe the cameras have helped.
We've solved a lot of cases with, uh, with the cameras. Uh, this last year, I wouldn't say it's public, but we'll, got to, our greenway policy went way down this past year. I've been amazed of the amount of decrease in vandalism to be that on greenway. I know a lot of it had to do with COVID and kids being out of school a year prior, but I'm really pleased this year with our, our greenway, with some of the tools we've enacted.
This doesn't say anything about how many we need and if this covers all the need or not.
We believe that the estimates have changed. The Christopher had, um, had sufficient camera, it's not, it should be sufficient for us to have a, a good coverage of both parks.
Okay.
Any more discussion?
I have a motion. I'm, I'm, excuse me. I move that the town council authorize the use of thirty-four thousand for security cameras at Ralph Dean Recreation Park and Lake Arrowhead.
Second that.
Any more discussion? Daniel?
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit? Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Burke, wastewater treatment plant storage building.
Yes, sir. Council's requested to consider authorization of ARPA funding in the amount of nine thousand dollars for a storage building at the water treatment plant. The plant's lawn maintenance equipment is currently stored outdoors, and indoor storage would extend the equipment's useful life. In addition, the plant would also be storing additional storage, uh, would it be storing additional spare motors, pumps, and parts for the plant.
Council?
Yeah, I move that the town council authorized, if you're gonna get all the new stuff, you gotta have somewhere to put it. Uh, I move that the town council authorized use of nine thousand-
storage, uh, would it be storing additional spare motors, pumps, and parts for the plant.
Counsel?
Yeah, I move that the town council authorized, if you're going to get all the new stuff, you got to have somewhere to put it. I move that the town council authorized the use of nine thousand dollars for a storage building at the water treatment plant.
Second.
More discussion? Danielle, we're getting closer to the end here.
Yes. Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Shiro?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Shiro?
Yes.
Mr. Burke, treasurer printers.
Yes, sir. Council's requested to consider authorization of ARPA funding in the amount of a thousand dollars towards the acquisition of new receipt printers for the payment windows and one replacement printer for the treasurer's office. The receipt printers are now out of production and are becoming more and more difficult to maintain and to purchase printer cartridges.
Thousand dollars, is that all he could come up with then?
I'll be absolutely honest with you, I'll correct that after everything else. I'm so excited about everything else.
Let me give him a wallet here.
All right, any discussion?
I move the town council authorize the use of a thousand dollars to acquire new receipt printers for the payment windows and one replacement printer for treasurer's office.
Second. All right, any more discussion? Danielle?
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Shiro?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Burke, code amendment, derelict buildings.
Yes, sir. Uh, basically, in discussion with the town attorney, uh, no public hearing is required for council's consideration of the adoption of the code amendments to allow the town to pursue blighted property and derelict building abatement. Um, staff would request consideration of, uh, council's, uh, future inclusion of funding and future budgets to allow us to pursue, uh, the more serious, uh, abatement issues, should the town have to pursue them, uh, on our own, and then place a lien on those properties. Bless you.
Bless you.
Ooh, thank you.
Counsel, any thoughts, discussion?
I think we've put a lot of time and discussion into this.
Would it be something we can pass? We don't ever have to use it really unless we want to, right?
No, I, I think...
It's a tool in our toolbox is the way I look at it.
Yeah, we spent a lot of time on it. I think we've given it a lot of good thought, so, yeah.
Um, yeah, so the, what, what, refresh my memory, what was the estimated budget for it to be effective if we were going to pursue some of those bigger ones? I know it's case by case, but...
It, it's case by case. Um, again, if we were to pursue a demolition of a dwelling, you're probably looking at fifty to to seventy-five thousand dollars. Uh, if we're looking to do, um, securing of property to keep out, um, animals, to secure water intrusion, to remove, um, vegetation, probably anywhere from five to ten thousand dollars.
With all of that, we can file liens, I guess, on the property, can we?
Yes, sir. We would recover should the property ever be sold.
We'll probably have to outsource some inspection services, too.
That is correct. Uh, if we pursue the demolition, um, there, there, there should be a recommendation from a third party confirming that demolition is the the most viable alternative for the property.
Well, I think, I think, I agree with the mayor. It's a, it's a tool I think we need to have. I'll make the motion if, if everyone, unless there's any other discussion. I move that the town council adopt the code amendments to chapter twenty-six, Buildings and Building Regulations of the Town Code and to Article nine of Chapter seventy-eight to establish regulations on blighted properties and derelict buildings as presented. I further move to direct the town manager and the town treasurer to include a budget line item and funding for blighted properties and derelict buildings, abatement in the FY twenty twenty-three, twenty-four budget.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? Danielle, this might be it, isn't it? Okay. Go ahead.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Shiro?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Shiro?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Shiro?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Shiro?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Shiro?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Shiro?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Burke, wastewater treatment plant, storage building.
Yes, sir. Council's requested to consider authorization of ARPA funding in the amount of nine thousand dollars for a storage building at the water treatment plant. The plant's lawn maintenance equipment is currently stored outdoors, and indoor storage would extend the equipment's useful life. In addition, the plant would also be storing additional storage, uh, would it be storing additional spare motors, pumps, and parts for the plant.
Counsel?
Yeah, I move that the town council authorized, if you're going to get all the new stuff, you got to have somewhere to put it. I move that the town council authorized the use of nine thousand dollars for a storage building at the water treatment plant.
Second.
More discussion? Danielle, we're getting closer to the end here.
Yes. Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Shiro?
Yes.
Mr. Burke, treasurer printers.
Yes, sir. Council's requested to consider authorization of ARPA funding in the amount of a thousand dollars towards the acquisition of new receipt printers for the payment windows and one replacement printer for the treasurer's office. The receipt printers are now out of production and are becoming more and more difficult to maintain and to purchase printer cartridges.
Thousand dollars, is that all he could come up with then?
I'll be absolutely honest with you, I'll correct that after everything else. I'm so excited about everything else.
Let me give him a wallet here.
All right, any discussion?
I move the town council authorize the use of a thousand dollars to acquire new receipt printers for the payment windows and one replacement printer for treasurer's office.
Second. All right, any more discussion? Danielle?
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Shiro?
Yes.